Good evening, everybody. Welcome you to the August 15th meeting of the Acting Planning Board. I'm going to call the meeting to order. So... Oh, sorry. We have... we're a little short tonight, but we do have a forum, our ultimate dinner salon, and we'll be in voting tonight. To get this started, I'd like to... A motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Second. On favor. Dennis and Paul, my lady. Thank you. I didn't realize that Don was not here tonight. So I'm going to... Do my job. Old business. Mr. Martel, Young Beach Road, Route 2171, 09029. Proposed 22 lot subdivision. Come on up.
Can you hear me?
Hi. At our last meeting, your proposal was planned, was accepted.
Yep.
So...
The application.
Yeah, the application. Let me correct myself. The application was accepted by this board. You were in good standings for every requirement that we had to that point, up to that point of an application. It was a long time getting there, so thank you for your diligence on that. And I'm not sure tonight where you have new information for us or where you'd like to go with this.
I was pretty much waiting for a few answers from Southern Maine.
Okay. You have not heard back then from Southern Maine?
Well, a few were, should be, I guess it's changed hands since then, so the new guys picked it up. I was aware of that one, Monday, but it's all going pretty good.
Okay.
Wait for a few more answers and questions on some things and should be all set with that. Pretty much covered everything else. DEP's on track. He's going pretty good with those people. They don't lay light in part so far. They might have a site walk, probably in a month, thirty days.
The DEP?
Yeah.
Can the DEP's sidewalk something that we could take back?
I would imagine they'll notify you, so if you notify us, then we'll know.
If...
If we have...
That's...
Yep.
Free of...
Yep, yep. We have it already up there in Portland. They like the plan, they like the way out, so they're real extremely busy, so I wouldn't be surprised if they do send it back to you guys. But didn't say where, Martel, get your approvals and come back and see us, so we get all the answers and questions week to week with the people. You know what?
Very good.
Well, they realized what I could do with the property. They like what I'm doing with it. They realize their conscience that I could do with it, so... But I'm learning a lot from them, so it's all good.
You can't go wrong with them, for sure.
Their big issue is going to be stormwater management. That's been addressed fairly well. Abby from New York County Water and Soil was Southern Maine Regional Planner, was the original planner on it. She's moved it up to Lijie Feldman, which is the senior planner there. So... And he's probably looked over her shoulder when she did the original plan review, so it should be starting from the beginning. It should be taking it right from there. And basically, we're just looking for a reply from the rebuttal about the questions they have, is where we're at at that level.
And that's going back to the July 1 letter?
I think July 1 was the response to their letter, right?
It was their response, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're six weeks waiting for a response from their letter.
Is that standard time here?
Everybody's busy. Nobody has any help, so... And sometimes you just got to remind them that you're waiting. And if you don't remind them, then other things get stacked on top of you, so...
The DEP, do you listen to their back?
Yeah. Yeah, they're sending a lot of things straight to Agasco, not even approving it at the board level, so...
Lucian didn't have any help for a long time either.
Yeah.
Right. No, he didn't. He didn't have any help at all. So I mean, I'm sure that I should take that as helping them as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Easily.
He just does the America stuff. They'll have full licensing individuals looking at this. Which that should be knowledgeable, that's all they do is go to these plans. Stormwater, like I said, stormwater will be their major thing, and they'll be looking at each individual site.
Once again, remember the board, they're the elements of the staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, right, this country has to work, and the board is somewhere...
They forgot to tell us. I know. They forgot to tell us. Okay, that I think at this point, just to sort of bring you forward. Once we get the reply back from them, and you hear from DEP, the reply to your reply, I should say, to Southern Maine, and you hear from DEP, that's when we will move forward. We'll have a public hearing coming up. We'll have to notify others and that sort of thing. And I expect we'll have a lot of people coming out to, you know, ask and learn. And at that time, when we get from you a final plan, we will share that plan, so people will be able to see what's on it and go from there. And I think perhaps that process will move a little quicker.
Yep.
Once that starts moving, so...
I will have the final plan. There's a couple of things I want to change, but not crazy. That kind of be a change for the next meeting.
Okay. And then we might have a couple of changes on it, you know?
Go ahead, go ahead.
We like to do that.
Most important, I like to... I've been meeting with more and more people during the week, and a lot of people are understanding it because they're meeting out there, walking around, not realizing what I was really dealing with, sort of talking, probably nineteen new pups, and saying, well, it's 22, it's going to be nineteen new ones. We'll see them in this plan why we're back down to nineteen. But I'm meeting with a lot of them, and so it's working all pretty good. And two of you, and Ken called, she got his mind, anybody myself on there, they call me midnight, two in the morning, and I didn't answer any questions. Makes it so much easier. I mean, they're all open to come to the meetings still. I'd rather have more than every of them. If somebody wants to come out and barter land, meet with me, and I can give my wishes, what I'm going to do, how long I'm going to build this, you know? And you can hear from the course as well, instead of all the emails and all the falsehoods that's going around on anything, so... I mean, I'd be glad to meet with anybody, so if it's okay with a few people...
Well, these are public meetings, so...
Yeah, right.
People can come here, they see us on TV.
Yep.
You know, I hope that's not a surprise to you. You're televised all the time.
I've got a great reputation from here in New England. That's how we do things. They understand that there. I notify all the others myself. We have an in-house meeting before that. A lot of people feel comfortable there. I mean, it's more welcome to come to the meeting, but I'm just saying, if anybody calls, feel free to give them my cell phone. I have no problem with that. It helps a lot, you know? Settles one, you know, people, and so if it's okay with the board, feel free.
That's a very nice offer on New York County.
One of the things we discussed about a year or two ago was the homeowners association document. As we move further and further, that's one thing we're involved is the private road association doc measured in with the homeowners association, just to see what everybody's rights are and what the developers' rights are.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's been worked on, and I hope they have those settlements, meaning that that's more important than any.
At the end of the day, yeah.
Yep. And also in that, we want to make sure that on the maintenance and watching, you know, who is going to check those ponds after, you know, a big storm is there? Are they seeing any erosion? Is the basin simply at its level? And the ground won't accept it anymore?
Well, it's not going to be built though, from years account.
Oh, I know.
So at the same time, I'm going to have to please, but as I build one or two houses, maybe so many years in that, if I ever do, that's something that's going to have to be monitored. Whoever it is is going to be paying a homeowner's fee, so it comes out of that, and then by then, after somebody helps, I'll turn it over. But for the rest of my life, I will please it. And I don't want to make a shift there.
Right, right. It should be in that document.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's the same kind of a thing when somebody has facility and they're having parties and conferences and weddings. We want it written in the rental agreement, no open flames.
Right.
Not just today, but, oh, I don't let anybody smoke in my... Well, that's very nice. I want it in your rental agreement too, you know? One thing wrong.
No, it all has to be put right in there.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, you know, private waves, because I don't want people cutting down my road, going to my beach or whose that hill. I want it protected like too, so I know all for that, so...
Great, great.
There is being, that's in works, if you speak.
Okay. Excellent.
I think once the board accepts the final plan, we'll probably link that right on the website. Put that on there, have it on there.
Right on the website.
Once we accept the final plan.
And then that way too, that'll be done when Brad would... When you cover this thing, you'll put your phone number anywhere. You'll get that. Responsible for having Brad get the phone calls for you in the morning.
I'm a big boy, I mean, I'm used to it, but mainly the others, the new people, so I mean, I don't want to put it in the newspaper or nothing, I don't want to do that.
No, no.
So, but it's all good. I just speak my mind, is what I say, I'm going to do, I do.
Excellent. Thanks.
So I understand where we're at. For me, for John, I don't know. We don't accept the final plan until we get the approval from DEP, you know, kind of sort of what?
Not so much DEP versus Southern Maine Regional Planner, but first, we've got to get the final plan. He's still tweaking it with the conditions and changes we've asked him to do, so he's going to tweak that, resubmit it, we'll take a look at it, maybe at the next meeting, you guys will feel comfortable. If you get it to me, we can so before the meeting, that'll be good, I get it out to the board, I have it. If not, we'll take it at the next meeting and accept it at the following meeting, so we'll be our published itself for a public hearing.
Yes, we'll stay at that.
What do you have a two weeks for a public hearing?
Right.
Yeah. Ten days is on.
It's currently two weeks, but to do it from one meeting to the very next meeting really makes it tight for pristine, so... And the newspapers just, they need like several days of time to get it in, so to satisfy the requirements of the owners.
And we're not...
Two weeks is tight. It's very tight.
Typically, I usually, most boards, sometimes they... If you order approval, you approve it and then put in order conditions, because DEP takes so long. They say get it all approved and then put in the order conditions that I can't pull building permits to be have signed up from them.
In any conditions they have.
In any conditions they have.
So I can't, you people would approve, it would be all approved, but that'd be in the condition that can't reach, no building permits are issued until we get the final approval from you people from then.
Right.
You go back and forth, you drive each other crazy, so...
And I do think it's important to remember that once the entire project has the approval, you still need a building permit for each individual.
Oh, yeah. So you can't get away with it.
It's not a rubber stamp. I don't want people to think it's a rubber stamp.
Right.
It's not. Very good. Is there anything else anybody would like to ask or would like to share?
I'll do it.
Thank you. I need to...
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you. Our next meeting, we're getting close to... When is Labor Day? We can tell you.
Labor Day is only the first this year, so we should be like...
What's the number? Just so, you know, when we have these, I mean, Fourth of July had me completely discombobulated.
You're looking for our last meeting?
Yeah.
Because I believe it's September.
September. Yeah. Will be our next meeting.
Yep.
Very good. Great. We shall see you then. Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Joe? Mr. Plant, come on down.
Give me ahold of Sharpies.
Yeah.
You're a natural.
I didn't see you here, though. I thought you left Billy out. I'll be right back.
I thought about it, but I figured you guys were too good moved to let that happen.
Nobody lets Billy out.
Large versions and smaller ones. Yeah. Just for...
You got one for them? This one for now? You want for now, or some? Well, there's the biggest one.
There's a couple extras.
So we had asked you for elevations?
Yep. So this is kind of half a process from the engineers over at Sevago Techniques. So they took our topography work, our wetlands work, and our boundary work, and developed this proposed grading plan. Basically, you know, as is kind of a typical of these, we've assumed a, you know, what's most likely the bottom of it, but we feel this responsibility as the technicalist to check and want to capable to make sure he's, you know, it's never been more closer than five feet to that level. Otherwise, not much has changed. There's just a lot more information backing up, you know, what we discussed at the last meeting. Craig has prepared kind of this overall map, and then two more detailed halves of it, so that you can get a better look at the different grades he's proposed to meet all the, you know, two months old requirements and anything else he needs to consider. And then, you know, he's got, again, we've got a pretty lengthy set of declaration notes and things of that nature, which again, we sort of modeled a lot of some of it after what we had seen on, which are like team Ohio River, and then, you know, typical type engineer stuff. Add a whole one more sheet of text, you know, just erosion control details and seed details, things of that nature. Still prevention details and all those finer things on kind of one full sheet.
He does all that. You don't, Frank, all that, no?
Yeah, you've kind of got some highlights. You've kind of got some highlights here, so, you know, there's some pre and post-construction notes. There's some notes regarding stockpiles, mulching, sediment areas, things like that. The whole site is designed and intended to be internally drained, so we're not necessarily worrying about much or any stormwater leaving the site, nor properly containing it within the 19 acre work area in Carson. So, yeah, he's just got details about different stabilization, controlling the dust above and beyond, even what Billy had proposed to pay the first hundred feet at the entrance. So, yeah, there's a lot to read here. If you guys want to take the time between now and the next meeting, but...
And sharing our...
Yeah, well, I could print more. I brought three of the big sets and we have the little sets, and I can also...
I'm going to ask you not... Don't.
Ken has a PDF of it all, too, if people prefer to read it on a tablet or on a computer screen.
I mean, if we ask you something, and you can tell me it's there.
Yep.
That's great.
Most of the notes, you know, again, I've kind of pretty thoroughly reviewed the minutes and the plan leading up to most recent approval of this sort of thing, so I was prepared for three quarters of the stuff. Most of those notes are on this, are on...
What we find on the front page.
Yep, yep.
Are you planning to do monitoring wells?
I was going to ask them that.
Monitoring wells? Are you planning to do those? It just says based on the...
We certainly can, but we're going to take it. We're going to take it out later, so it would be a little while before we put the first monitoring well in.
Just, you know, right now, what he's trying to say is it's so deep.
Right, and it's so deep, we're going to open up a, up to a two or three acre area, and we'll just start taking slices off it till we get down.
But, yes, once he starts to approach that...
I mean, we do...
Eagle High Bowl.
Yep.
The lights, their monitoring wells in there.
Yep. But they had a grade zero when they started.
Oh, that's right.
They had a grade...
They was kind of...
They went out, that's right. That's right.
The 720 is kind of just the opposite of what they did.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to get down, butterways, before we can even put a monitoring well in your meeting.
Okay, no.
So, you know, part of how all this works too, once Billy gets past the fifth acre of this, that automatically triggers a permitting review by DEP as well. That is common on everything, because I notice a technical comply. He has the authority, gets anywhere over that fifth acre, he's going to notify them, they're going to come out and perhaps ask them to make some modifications to their prestand, or no, we have notes in that regard, and, you know, again, the last couple of plans under there, that's on all of those plans. So there's, I love to be on what happens in this room, at that, after five acres have been touched out here, he's got some, they will automatically ask for required correspondence as a ready gravel operation to... Yeah, follow up. Make sure he's doing what he's supposed to, which includes staying five feet above that quantity.
We have a gravel pit at our shop in Levittin, and they, he can automatically come out at 8:00 P.M. Just to drive through, they check everything, make sure they're not...
I think Joe's right. We'll just take the plan, review it next week, take a look at it, and...
Absolutely.
See if we have any issues. If something jumps out to me before, he can just send you an email and... Yep.
I will ask you, did you reach out to the association there?
Oh, that's the next one.
The next point?
Yep.
So you are going to do it one in one?
Yeah, two different orders.
Ah.
He's just confusing us.
Yes, he is. I understand that after two weeks ago.
Billy's looking at it, and Joe, what didn't you tell me?
You gotta turn it, the thing's going on there.
Yeah. I have a good answer for you on that, but we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay. Okay.
Sounds good. I'll get a chance and try to do a plan review next week. We'll get ready for the next meeting. Hopefully accept the plan, the application, notify the public hearing, and then go off the air. Yeah, that's the biggest thing we would like to do, is just get to the point where we can get you guys out there, see everything. Do a sign mark before it snows. Yeah, get those...
No, let's...
You saw off the trees.
Yes.
Turn the pair. Oh, good. Yeah, turn. Yeah, you say, you're still talking about the other one.
Yeah, I still am, I know. And you know what, Billy, honestly, you know what it is? Because I live two miles down the street from this.
Yes.
And it's like, I'm just closing my mind to...
Yeah, because I don't even think you'll even know they are.
Yeah.
We won't be seen by, from the road, from the entrance, not going to be exactly that side of the street.
Well, you can appreciate as I...
Oh, absolutely.
As I've driven by them now, twice in a day.
And I'm...
So that's one in one, that I have very closely, you know, looked, and I think I know exactly where you want to put your opening. It's kind of a natural one.
I think I've proven myself that I run a clean operation also. So we just want to be a good neighbor. I want to get the value off on the end.
Right.
Do you want to go with the apartment, which is satisfying my own curiosity? I assume the material in there is the same stuff that was over in that, it's bone...
Yeah, it's standing gravel.
Yep.
Yep.
No pressure?
It's all, yeah. The few test holes I've dug, it's all standing gravel and nothing but, so the last thing I'm worried about is water. The ground's going to suck it right out.
All the way through, that hole. You have an idea about how much material is...
Uh, close to a million yards.
Close to that, yes.
Yeah. The dimensions I ran is on a quick calculation, you know, you could call 700, 800 yards on the low end. It's quite a bit of dirt.
So you do that a lot?
Yep. And we're not selling to the public, so it's far our own use, so I'm pretty much going to end up being my kids, I would think, in a little last minute.
The reason, I guess, one place I wanted to know, my own curiosity, and the other thing, same stuff like this, you know, the year will be there, probably kids will be there, and stuff, it alleviates being on TV, it alleviates a lot of room lifts and speculation, you know, exactly what you're doing down there.
Yeah, no, it's a gravel pit for our own company, and some weeks we'll be in there a lot, some weeks we won't even be there.
Will you put your name on it?
I, um, I would like to. But this is, this is probably that would be the way to be totally honest, I know. Everybody's going to know we are, they're there, they're...
Put your name as an entrance sign, you mean?
Yeah, or something.
An ENSHAR is going to require some little signage to get...
I think you don't get an ENSHAR until you really get into, like, if you have a crusher and stuff like that in there.
You've got a crusher or occasionally come in, once a year.
Depends on if you find a lot of rock.
Yep, bigger stuff.
Yeah.
That crusher will be...
Probably have a home for it.
Yeah, I mean, amazing what, you know, you're looking at one, a crusher coming in for one, two weeks a year, tops, which would probably be done in the spring or the fall.
They're going to have a...
Yeah, to watch the spring because that road is...
Well, yeah, posted season.
Posted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is good for you guys and bad for me.
Yeah. I understand that, yeah.
With the crusher, Billy, doesn't the ENSHAR stuff...
That falls under the company that does the crushing.
Yes, that's...
Yep.
My, I used to deal with ENSHAR.
That's what I wanted to do with them. Yeah. If we had to be, you know, if this was a quarry that we were crushing all the time, we'd be a whole other story, but I don't really think I'd do much crushing here, no.
Has the timber harvest been done out there yet? Have you been back in?
The timber harvest is done by day logging, who I bought the land from.
Yeah.
But I am going to hire a company to come in and clear an area. I'm not going to do it myself.
Your day kids are...
Uh, yeah, probably like, I think clear up in five acres, the first shop, but five acres, a really big spot, you know, we're doing like a three acre area.
Does it burn, is the timber junk?
No, it's, all the timber is really gone, it's just hardwood that's there now. It's firewood, yeah.
Yeah, they're kind of pretty hard before you know it.
I bought it off the lobbyists who took anything that was worth anything.
They took anything out of the...
I'm sorry?
They took everything out.
Especially the pine and any big hardwood, they took it all. So what you see it now is it's unbelievable how much growth has gone back in five years.
It is incredible.
But there's a lot, there's a lot, you know, which is premium firewood.
Yes.
So I'll probably be dealing with a company that deals more in firewood, that will come cut it, and that'll be good for them, good for me.
They stump, once you stump it, you have somebody committing to bring the stumps on site?
I really wanna mix the stumps with the loom, if we push up, we're all in one pile.
Yeah.
And after three or four years, it's amazing how much the stumps actually rot. And there's almost nothing left of them, be amazed.
It's amazing, I must agree, it's lots of those stumps.
Unbelievable.
Oh, too dry out.
Yep. Yep, when we did, um, Stan Smith's across from Sawtells, we pushed all the, put in all the stumps, mixed it together and when we spread the loom back, it was almost something that would...
Oh, very little stumps dry out.
When you bury them, you next to right is with the loom and they're in a very big pile and they just rot.
Even if they're buried?
They, they rot better when they're buried.
Really?
Yeah, when they're exposed, they kind of try to, uh, versus just rotting and it's pretty good soil there too, you can put it in one stone.
Yeah, they're just down in the open, they almost...
Well, you'll be buried.
Put it, just push, put it all in, then, you know, we try to put it in windrows, we, we push, when we strip it, we try to put it in an area where it's gonna be easy to reclaim.
You know, push it back.
Yeah.
So you bury those stumps, Billy, what's left alone?
Yeah, those will get, those will actually get buried in the slopes. Uh, you keep, we'll call them buried, but they'll get lost in the slopes.
Yeah.
Any concerns, though? Probably not, I don't know what's happening.
No, I think we'll try to do a plan review this week.
Yep.
Get ready for the next meeting and any concerns, shoot Joe an email and...
Perfect, we'd love to go off to him. We got something.
Okay, so sidewalk at the next meeting then?
Yeah.
That would be great. I've already had a drill where I'm at.
It'll make it more?
No.
Okay, so the, um, next meeting, we'll set that, I have a sidewalk, it'll, um, you know, a couple of things and then, uh, we'll come there.
That would be great, thank you so much.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll try to schedule a meeting, Ken, early mid next week, so if there are any revisions, you might just appear before that meeting. Trying to get those addressed so it goes comfortable with, again, just a final point. Or accept it.
Just a number accepted.
Let's give acceptance and go over the final agreement.
Hope springs eternal. No, just saying. Just an idea, just an idea.
So, uh, next meeting, hopefully, if things go where they hopefully will, will they accept the plan at the next meeting?
It's gonna be a sidewalk.
We do the sidewalk before we accept the plan?
No, we accept the plan and then go out and do the sidewalk and, uh, if you're confident enough, I mean, it's a fairly simple project. You could even throw a public hearing in for a couple of meetings out. That would there, gives us plenty of time to post notice and try and, uh, beat the ten days and just count the dates in and the date out and...
I think that could, that would probably be hoofless. It's gonna be November so fast.
Yep.
The sooner we get the public hearing, the people knowing would be better for, for me. I, I want to, but it's gonna be a concern to hear it.
And I think I talked to Joe, like, you may just wanna touch base with the director of orders.
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of them already.
Yep, yep, the one after the pit, the one across the street.
Yeah, I've talked to, yeah, I've talked to the people across the street and I haven't talked to, uh, Davis, I've talked to Davis.
He's usually up doing the firewood or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, I've talked to him in the morning, I've talked to him about it a little bit and he's been fine too, so. I have a name, but it's really a good concern.
Awesome, see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, leave it here for now, unless you, you...
I haven't yet.
Yeah, just leave it here, I guess we'll keep talking.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. One thing, I'm completely looking at it. Does everybody get copies of my version?
Is this the fairgrounds?
No, I was still writing, I thought I gave eleven by seventeens, but I don't see a single person miss out. So I just wanted, I didn't bring, I didn't bring that. Cause there are a couple of notes on my plan as far as like proposed hours of operation and things that probably aren't on here, so if anybody needs copies of a version one, I'll give that to you while we're filming it as well, so I just kinda add.
Just as a final plan, with the signature block on and stuff like that. Page one, three.
Well, if you don't, I always got PDFs, but I'll give some paper copies over here and try to make sure we get to you guys. And you can review all that for next week too. You gotta spend some time before the meeting, I'd like you to have that as well.
I don't have copies of that, so you're, no, I don't.
Most everything is the same, but there are a couple in budget specific notes here that we're engineering for, we wanna make sure we can have. I will make sure they get there, email, paper copies, everything. Tomorrow, Monday, whatever, make sure that's on.
That would be great.
Awesome.
Would be interesting, ours got one issue.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just let them know, at least proposed, that'll be a start for discussion.
Right, alright.
Okay, fairgrounds.
Not, not terribly. Fairgrounds.
This hole is bigger, it's either twice as big as the last. You guys are gonna need assistance just to get this stuff to your car.
Quick, quick, hurry up.
At least one side of the big ones, it's just two. Were you surprised that the other guy said we're gonna fit in there?
Uh, very much, actually.
Thank you.
You didn't think it was gonna get high?
How many cars did you have?
Yeah, me too.
How many?
Four twenty-nine.
That was so fast.
Which, how many cars parked out on the highway?
The last page of that, so I started to, you know, as you know, at the last meeting, I was working on trying to sort all this out and finally I called Craig over at Sebago, it was great, he said, Craig, I can do this, but it's gonna take me like another two days. And he just laughed, he goes, oh, this is what our software does, he goes, I'll send it down to the graffeters, we'll have it in a couple hours.
Yes, please.
Some intern there, in the basement.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Just about. So, you know, it's, it's no, no means of finalized parking, you know, if we wanna jump right to that, it would be the last page in these booklets that you guys have. He was just saying, one way it could be laid out, um, you know, the entrance, I guess that's a cover of the sheet, but the entrance being to the right, exit being to the left, these are appropriate sized spaces, these are what the travel leaves could look like to get there and, um, and Craig kind of stopped everything short of getting down to this east of the end, um, towards the road and towards the drainage structure there. But again, uh, it's, it's probably twice as many as I thought my head would fit, you know, you see it, you lose sight of the scale of it, it's so long that it looks skinny. But in reality, that skinny area is still pretty big. So, you know, again, this, it would mostly just be that one or two weekends a year where they had bigger events that we envisioned.
Not the circus.
Stuff being utilized.
And the BW, RSH?
RSH, RSH. Even the circus, I don't think is bringing point that many people out, maybe.
But that, that would get all the cars off the highway.
I would think and then some, you know, at a minimum, you know, as a, you know, I don't ever like to restrict anybody unless we have to because we're in a world where everybody's restricting everybody to everything, but having gone to this event here quite often myself, I mean, minimum, I would personally, I'd personally, I would love to see you not be crossing the street. And even if it was just this other side of the road that was off limits, it would, it would make things a lot easier and more safe.
And, and it's as simple as, you know, you pull the cars and kids start opening the doors and jumping and running out before you can get out and corral them there. Halfway there.
You need to kick that third street corner.
So, yeah, we'll leave right into that, um, so I called Roger Ridley, um, you know, who's, who's one of the heads here with the fairgrounds and told him we needed to address that and chuckled and said, I already went to their ending meeting this, this spring and, um, because there were so many rumors going around, I had actually asked him to attend that meeting and I wasn't aware of it. And, uh, he was able to, um, have some conversations with them and they overall were pretty supportive of, of everything. They, like Ken had done, had asked for some lighting and crosswalk here to be manned at, you know, any major events, there'd be a fair amount of people here. And then the association also asked, apparently, and I'm not familiar with this, but apparently they do their own signage up and down the road in this area during...
No parking?
Yeah, trying to make sure the public doesn't stack down through there. That was kind of the one thing they asked Rogers, that they were allowed to continue to do that, to encourage people to use the new block instead. And he said they already agreed to that at their beginning meeting.
Yeah, because in the past, they had probably been through some...
Right. So, you know, besides just being curious about what was going on, at least Rogers' report on that was that, uh, it seemed pretty favorable as long as we tried to reduce traffic out on the main road and on, on thirteen street itself, that's gonna be their concern. I did tell Roger that probably once we got past the acceptance, acceptance part of this, um, he coming for me to get further explained of all that stuff himself.
Yep.
Maybe this has nothing to do with why we're giving, um, little rocks more in and out of it. I don't know the answer to that, but who's that people said, that's a private road, they don't see three trucks. Well, the most private roads aren't built well enough, uh, pulled up with trucks, it's like the town road time.
Right. Yeah, I think it limited down to a ten wheeler or triax look the most, um, during the public hearing and hopefully they weed that out ahead of time. Um, that the association works, we association and takes care of that as well. I think we'll have to look at this as two different levels, one is gravel pit extraction and then two is parking lot. And parking lot, if the economy has a downturn, it could be twenty years until it's open or it's gonna be opened in phases that, you know, is an acre and a half open, we've re-vegetated it, let's not park and pass there. Or if the front of keeps good, it's still probably five years of digging in there, if not maybe ten. Cause it's only being removed as needed by one contract, it's similar to how, uh, Land is looking at his and the bike is looking at his. It's not a pit open to everybody driving, it's just self, self-sustaining.
Self-service, how difficult would it be to, um, notify the association of the, you know, care? Just so if anyone belongs to the association has a concern whether they live next to it, they're not a direct provider.
Um, conditional use is gonna be five hundred feet, the subdivision's directly butted. So by the time we do the five hundred, that's gonna be notified and not gonna be on the website. Uh, we'll probably make contact, the fair association may contact directly with them too. Cause they're gonna want to weed out any concerns prior to, just like any other applicant, uh, contact all the people that are gonna have concerns, weed it out before the public hearing in the sidewalk and the ninety-eight public hearing, there's no issues, we've taken care of all of them before we get that brought.
Well, it's always the goal to do as much of that as we can ahead of time, but I mean, we can make sure, I don't know if the association itself is quite due people out there, I don't know.
Why don't you tell one, sure there's a Facebook page, Thirteen Street.
Yeah, I don't know what they do to communicate with each other, but I certainly don't mind making sure the association itself gets that matter certification to be distributed to the members.
And I do believe Thirteen Street has their own outside, so it would be a little easier than, than most associations to get that information out. But I still think, I mean, it's, you know, when, when they had that initial meeting, you know, people may not have thought about the fact that there's trucks in and out and all of the traffic is gonna have an effect on their road.
Yep, but it's, it's, you know, it depends on how you look at it, the association, you know, um, the land is still owned by the fairground, subject to the rights of everybody to use it and the association to use it.
The road is open, I mean.
Right.
The road is open, they have an easement still open?
Yes, they do have easements.
Who pays, who pays for the maintenance of that road?
I'm, I'm sure probably the association pays for it.
Does city fairgrounds contribute to that?
I don't know, like I said, as soon as we get to the point we have accepted that application, then certainly we will be attending the meeting, so we can...
I think they have their association in the fairgrounds.
I...
I think they do.
They have in the past, so the communication between the two is already well established, so.
Like I said, at that meeting, he said, he attended per their request and he said they were through a lengthy discussion at that point, but I, I wasn't there, so I can't speak to exactly, he just gave me a quick summary of all of it. Like I said, as I said, as it's proceeded, I wouldn't know the real deal, but it's important people, he can come in and have that discussion probably at a minimum at the public hearing, maybe before that as well, so. Everybody's here and frankly, I don't feel like the middleman, you know, everyone else can talk to whoever's here from the public or you guys directly. And get to the bottom of anything that might need to be addressed.
My, this bottom line is, I mean, they own the property, they got the right to work out of it.
It's just like every, it's like everything, bro, everybody needs to get along, everybody has their concerns and that, it's no different. We have quite the robust association over on Donny Road and Chapley, rather, but it's the same thing. We are pretty defensive too, we've had, we've shown up because we have both drawn it since we had the one and one of the terms and everything, so. It's give and take, we're using it, you're the responsible.
That's still there?
Yeah.
It's not in this one?
Yeah, that I have.
And I didn't have it electronically, like this one page, if you could use, I would need that.
I mean, the time is...
I mean, I don't, I don't know why.
The board can make any recommendations at once, and we can either go along with it or we can try to argue about it. Usually it's better to work with you guys than, I know there, but it's more, it's, in this instance, it'll be more about communication agreements between fairground and the association, make sure that it's happy and want, and give and take at that. Turn side, whatever.
How many people on the board of the fairgrounds?
I honestly have no idea, there's two gentlemen, I, I've been speaking with, Mr. Ridley and, um, Josh and Ryan, like, and the last thing, one gentleman who works at, at hardware store eleven in there.
I'm watching hardware.
Yeah, I'm toward the altar.
Yeah, yeah.
So those are the two I've been dealing with, but honestly, I'm not really, really, uh, just, uh, I can definitely find out or get right in here to answer that.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
I mean, the board members aren't the ones who are gonna be dealing with it, anyway.
But they might answer some of the questions more readily than Joel could, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to say to his parents here.
If Mr., um, if Mr. Ridley, he's the one that's here, he's, he's the owner, he's...
He's the president of the association.
Right, he's, yeah, he's the president, he generally, I would report, even back when I was giving them estimates and proposals, I reported to him and then he would report to them at the meetings, so.
But he can't really take action without the board voting in favor or something?
Um, I, I think to some degree he has that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Unless the stockholder is good enough, um, to...
Very about that, still haven't seen these certificates or anything exist for that.
Well, they do.
They exist.
I love that sort of stuff, I have a lot of the stock certificates from all the old solid mines that used to be over towards Lotting Road and that whole area. Trying to get them all, I have six of them at this point. I don't know what, I need too much money for, but I think they're cool.
Very nice.
That's something seventeen, that's a lot.
I, I've seen... Never actually...
Right, and it's two weeks without...
I think, I think at this point, what we'll do is, Ken, we'll review this again.
Yep.
You come back in two weeks, um, sidewalk, public hearing, and you go from there.
Yep, yeah, inevitably, once we do the sidewalks, there will be changes we don't have to deal with. So I'd love to just take care of that before I give you the next pile of papers. We can get to that at a point.
So, well, the way things look now, it's, um, first week of September and, um, you know, we have that ten days.
Yep.
For notification, so, you know, it won't be that far away.
Yep.
Now, these guys have been pretty patient, it's taken them quite a while to get all this together at this point.
So, you, you want to set it, it's like more tonight, or not?
Yeah, the thing we'll kind of agree on here is, everybody look at all this paperwork and do it now, hopefully, if I'm close enough to...
Exactly.
Get everybody involved.
Right.
Now, I will at a minimum, try to work with the co-owners, make sure at a minimum that the head of the association gets all these notifications and all that stuff. Again, it just, it makes life easier if we just deal with everything now rather than after.
I mean, these, these issues may have already been addressed, we just don't know.
Yep.
I mean, it was very good to hear that, oh, he was invited to the, the 13th Street Association meeting. That tells us there's good communications, well, that tells us there's communication over.
Yep.
And, you know...
Yep. No, and I will get through this preliminary stuff, but yeah, in this instance, I think it'd be a huge ask, I don't get distributed, somebody else will be in, so that you can get more detailed questions about the 13th Street communication and, and just how the fairground works in general.
Right.
Talk with it, too.
Excellent, excellent. Is that good?
Excellent. Thank you guys for seeing me and reading that chat.
And you will, you will get copies of that green, I'm going to call it the green plan.
Yes, yes, I want to make sure you have this set of notes here.
Yeah, because of the notes.
Most everything else is the same, we can just go over it if you don't have it.
Is not something you can send us separately sooner?
Yeah. I mean, I can send this as...
Oh, it has a word on it?
Yeah, I know, so, no.
Yeah, because again, that's probably the only thing that's not on Frank's plan, looking at it.
Oh, is this one?
No, no, no.
Yep. I will...
We'll get bigger copies of this.
No, no, this, this is, this is, this is West Shore. Right? And it is, it's West Shore.
Is that the one that we're missing the notes?
Yeah.
I thought it was this one.
No, it's West Shore. And, yeah, if we can get, if you can do that...
Absolutely, I can do both.
Yeah, well, let's, let's stop cutting trees. And...
Oh, trust me, the smoke was coming off the bridges before.
I bet that it was, but, you know, get that corner.
Yep.
That would be wonderful, great idea.
Maybe Joel, the communication, 13th Street, you know, Fair Association, you'll need to do it.
No, no, I do.
Make me feel better.
I appreciate what you're saying, that is, but I, as a consultant, I want to be in the bill of that too. I think let's get them all in here, work it out right now.
That's why I brought it.
Excellent.
I appreciate it.
We were here in the beginning, if we need to argue, we should still...
Boy.
Excellent, very good.
I know that's, Mr., you know, again, when I talk to him about speaker, I know that's something to do with us too, so let's work it out now. It's good.
So, it's pretty kind of...
Socks, can socks, standing around there. I took my land.
I've got you on camera 20 times. I told you.
Oh, you're here sharing, I'll give you an email, it's gone.
I don't like sitting in my office, that's my notes. I feel special, I've got me fancy.
Oh, there you go.
Don't tell anybody.
Don't tell anybody.
Nobody saw.
Thank you for coming in tonight again. Sorry, I was thinking fairground and not west shore when you first came in, and...
That's perfectly understandable.
I think it's the rhythm I sent him.
I'm going to call you gravel pit boardroom.
Well, I think you've got your number, 1-800, gravel pit, it connects two towns.
I'd like to think if these two projects ends up going through, who else, who else could want it? Are four people that could want something, should be seven to eight. I appreciate the time, it's why I'm here, but it's not my favorite type of project.
We don't have to say that, I'm like, you know.
I'm honest to a fault from the...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Someone under the table.
I was just thinking about leaving, just like that, if you want, and if, I don't know, you asked about bigger copies, I think I have extra sets of big ones, if you prefer. Do you want copies of these, or is it worth...
Well, we're probably going to get an updated on that.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we're, we'll be changing it over time. I'm sure, yeah, both of these, I'm sure once we do the sidewalk, there'll be adjustments.
Yep.
Yeah.
Excellent. Very good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night, Robin. That is the end of our whole business tonight. We didn't get this far.
7:55.
7:55. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can go in five minutes, I think we want to talk zoning.
Wow. What kind of zoning, excuse me, I'm going to curve over now, and what kind of zoning would you like to talk about? You have four mans now.
One of them would be docks in the shoreline zone. Either we've got to tighten up our regulations or eliminate our regulations. They're very vague. I don't know how to, so... They're not picking on anybody by any chances, but this is what a lot of the shoreline zoning looks like. This is just one house, one, two, three, four, five, six docks, multiple carriers, jacked up, canopy's over it. If we were to regulate it, I'd need another person. Oh, seven, eight docks.
It's a shame.
If that's, you know, the board's okay with...
And it looks like they're...
And I just grabbed a couple of them. Quite often, what we see is a 12 by 12, 16 by 16. If it was on land, it would be decked, it's out in the water.
Are you sure you're not trying to pick it up somewhere?
No, I'm just a couple that I grabbed.
Was it you?
It's in a neighborhood. That's why I rolled down as low as I could. There were just a couple that I had, real quick, but I just emailed to myself. But what, what often they have is a, if it was on land, it would be a dock. And I mean, a deck. It, it's quite often, there's fixed built benches in it, chairs are all on it, and you have a group of, you know, 15, 20 people hanging out on the dock. So our ordinance is, temporary dock or wash shall be no wider than six feet. So the intention from the DEP is, the dock is, basically, this would be a dock over here.
Yeah, that one's...
That?
Yep.
That would be it. And it's a dock per possible. So, the DEP's now on us to just get rid of it from your ordinance and don't regulate it.
I agree.
And then what happens with the explosion of docks?
We're way behind the explosion of docks, that would be for sure. So they're all supposed to be temporary, they're all supposed to come out every year and, and be removed.
And they, and these all do?
Yeah, yeah.
The thing we have one member is one.
What?
One.
The one dock, yeah.
If they, if they don't, they get crushed by the ice.
Yeah.
Who's going to go around? I mean, is that maybe violation?
Maybe it could be damage.
Not necessarily.
We've got several that stay in the water over the winter.
Yeah, depending on the design of the thing.
Yeah, if they, if they're on floats, some of them stay there.
So once you start running parallel with the shoreline, that becomes, it's supposed to be protected when the dock comes out. You can see this one here, they put the dock up against the house and put legs, there's going to be a dock up once a day. So, that's something to think about as you move forward.
What does it become on Marina?
I'd say when you, when you charge money.
Would the LEB have regulations going on?
They're not going to enforce anything.
Well...
And they, they don't really have the regulations for it. I can look at the chapter 1000 and see what they were proposing for us to adopt in 2015, '16, whatever that raft round was. But I know Shaq will get rid of it out of their ordinance.
I, I don't sure what it wanted, but...
Well, if it's unregulated, and we looked at this several years ago, when it was, you know, a 16 by 16 floating raft that was a couple hundred feet offshore, somebody complained about it, and I looked at it, and I'm like, that's conditional use, any floating dock is a conditional use for you guys. And obviously, we don't, we don't chase those, because now there're flamingos all over the place, as big as this room that are out there, and there, there's, the slides are built down to the trampolines that are huge out there, so something, not going to interrupt, something just to think about as we move back into our workshops, what we're going to do.
There's almost a lot of docks out there, is there's houses?
Oh, there's much more.
There are more docks than houses.
That's what he's saying, there's multiple docks per house, which we have to...
It was three, three houses.
That you utilized that one area?
Yeah.
But not the first one that had the eight docks.
No, that one was...
That was one of them. Maybe we should do X number of docks per feet of shoreline.
Okay, I have one dock.
Just a dock?
Okay, yeah, no, I'm just throwing this out, I have one dock, I have five kayaks, one canoe, and one IO, inboard outboard. Now, the inboard outboard gets prime location on the side of the dock, and I have a paddle boy. That's, you know, you collect over 20 years these toys, especially when the grandkids say, you know...
And that's what it is, the adults have, they've moved heavy to the paddy vagers, platoon boats, the ski boat, then there's the fishing boat, the aluminum boat for the kids.
Yeah, exactly.
And I understand you.
And when I have all my, all my grandkids, kids and grandkids there, those boats are out. And they're, when they're not there, they're not in the water. I mean, obviously, the 18-foot speedboat is, but, but all those other boats are on, I just pull them up on shore. But when they're there, they're all tied to something, to something.
Where do you guys find a shore station?
What's that?
What, how do you guys find a shore station?
What do you mean by shore station?
With delivery and bogging.
It means a definition of structure, but it's temporary, because they're taking it out. It's not a dock, so it's...
So there's a lot of, I mean, in the second picture, in my area, I mean, I think there was two, three shore stations there, so it looked like a lot more...
Oh, yeah. And then the shore station has the big canopy that goes up over it, and...
Well, that impervious surface, that's an interesting thing, in the shoreline zone, you know, they're going to put up an eight-by-ten shed, the S is a go for a slide, so if they're putting an X feet by ten shed up, you know, right next to the shoreline, I mean, you know...
This is, this is in the water.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's not a shed.
But it's an impervious surface, that's what I'm saying.
I've got the 10 by 20...
Well, it can be impervious, that's a mess, anyway, the department, they have their butt in there.
Right, but I mean, yeah, but it goes into the lake, you gotta say, it goes up. Which, which is where it would go anyway.
Right.
But quite often, we'll chase a deck, and then it becomes out in the water, onto the dock. So we just went through the effort of getting rid of the deck on the shoreline, goes out onto the, into the water. Again, I don't want to say we don't really care, but we'll just look for the guidance to you guys, either we want to remove all that from us...
I think this is going to, I think this is going to be a good...
It's got to be a good workshop.
Workshop topic.
The other one we've got a lot of issues with is the short-term rentals.
All right. What is that?
The short-term rentals. They used to be, one week, they'd rent the whole cabin out, now they're renting rooms out or sections of it, and it's just for overnight. So that's accelerated quite a bit on that. We're getting a lot of complaints from the neighbors, different neighbors.
Couple.
So that's something I probably want to look at, too. Either don't regulate, don't care, or we should look at.
I will.
I just Google Airbnb Act and see what's available.
Well, it's, 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 it does seem to be one of the things when you start hearing complaints, it's...
Well, it's the septic, the parking, people are coming in at midnight to the place.
Midnight, uh, but the...
Fireworks, fireworks every night, all day long.
And again, it's one thing when you have a property owner that owns a four, five, $600,000 house, they kind of care about the water quality, though, when you rent it out, somebody, you know, they don't care, they're not as caring.
They get nothing, yes.
Yeah. They don't get all the cash that they rent.
Yep.
And it was really, really common to see people rent the cabin the whole place out for the week, and paying their taxes for the month or something like that, but we're seeing a lot of overnight, two nights, and a lot of trade-off, continuously rotating customers' guests, so we look at it as the life safety of smoke detectors, cabin oxide detectors, things like that.
Right.
But it's also the abutters that are, the abutters of what's calling us, saying, you know, the people come in at 11 or 12 o'clock at night, and obviously, most of these lots are 50 by 100, so there's not a lot of... So something else to think of as we get to Wednesday.
Mr. Paul.
My four minutes are up, I've got six minutes.
Well, I know they are, but, you know...
Maybe I was looking for...
RHP. If you agree on RHP, yes, definitely. And it means right as per...
I told you.
So there has been a motion to adjourn, closing. Can I get a motion? Did I get it? You made a motion, we have a second, any discussion during that, all in favor. Thank you.